Good evening. This is May twenty one, two thousand and twenty four at six twenty five. This meeting will be conducted in person in the Sanford City Council chambers and via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRSA Section four oh three B two D and section six of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedure. Members of the public may also submit comments via the City of Sanford website at www.samfordmaine.org under government slash city council slash contact the council. Would you please join me for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please join me for a moment of silence. And now we have three different sets of minutes. In order to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held May second, May seventh, two thousand and twenty four, Anne?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
May I have a second, please? All those in favor? Thank you. In order to approve the minutes of executive session of the city council held on May seventh, two thousand and twenty four at five P M., may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? All right. And just to let you know, Steve has to leave here by nine thirty, so we're gonna try to move through this agenda at a reasonable speed. So I've got the mayor's report, and then you can get ready with your subcommittee reports. Oh, wait a minute, roll call. I forgot one thing. Well, that would have made the meeting shorter, wouldn't it? Deputy Mayor Hurley? Counselor Stackpole? Counselor Hanselman? Counselor Martell? Counselor Hitchcock? And I am Mayor Brink, present also, or Steve, manager Steve Buck and executive administrator Larissa Ricketts. All right, and now for the mayor's report. Seeing as this is the last meeting we have before Memorial Day, I usually like to do an education component, so this is some history about Memorial Day is an American holiday observed on the last Monday of May honoring the men and women who died while serving in the U.S. military. Memorial Day, two thousand and twenty four, will occur on Monday, May twenty seventh. And in case you didn't know, they're originally known as Declaration Day. It originated in the years following the Civil War and became an official federal holiday in nineteen seventy one. Many Americans observe Memorial Day by visiting cemeteries or memorials holded by the families at gatherings, participating in parades, which I think we have several counselors who are gonna participate in the parade this Monday. This also unofficially marks the beginning of the summer session. And I'd like, summer season, I'd like to point out that we were at, what, fifty degrees yesterday, and now we're at eighty degrees and expecting to be ninety degrees tomorrow, so we definitely are just moving right into summer.
It's raining next week.
It's raining next week? And I've got two more items. For the past two years, we have had a homeless task force, has been meeting the first and the third Monday of every month. This group consists of multiple organizations with the goal to solve the homelessness in our community, using evidence-based strategies to collaborate and humanely address the housing and service needs of this population. Fortunately, many of Sanford's population, of this population, now have housing and the help they need because of the endless hours that have been devoted to this group of people, so I'd like to thank all those people and those organizations. On June fifteenth, we will begin closing encampment at Heritage Crossing. There are several reasons for this. Number one, health and safety of the encampment residents. Number two, health and safety of the surrounding neighborhood. Number three, environmental health issues, because there is a presence of hazardous materials. We also worry about their physical safety because this is a flood zone and shoreland issues. To ensure the encampment is closed humanely, the encampment residents will be provided with verbal and written notices in plain language that is visible and posted multiple times. The warming center already verbally communicated this message. Housing navigators have and are still presently verbally communicating this message. The PD will have bike patrols in this area, and they will also be verbally communicating this message. On site, the day of the closing, the closure for the encampments, residents will be provided with the opportunity for intervention and prevention measures such as benefits like Medicare, SNAP benefits, WIC, housing vouchers, and other public systems that may serve the people to prevent homelessness. Next, assign case managers to provide ongoing support and connect residents with services. We'll also have pop-up tents in the area that will have resources available under them and people to help serve this community. So, having said all that, now that we're gonna be clearing that, and I am just, I have to praise the people who have been involved in this, it has all been done with caring, really concern for this community and humanely. So, stay tuned as the future Sanford Housing Authority under Diane Small is working on developing a thirty-unit Housing First project for this site, so that is extremely exciting, and Steve will probably have more on this in his report. I was just gonna, wanting to give you a preview, so stay tuned for what's coming. And there's more great news. Sanford is really moving ahead. The city won the two Brownfield Grants for the Boiler House and Continued Assessment for five point five million dollars. A shout-out to TRC, our consultants, for their tremendous efforts on the grant, plus the city staff for their great job that they have done, and the city council for taking a leap of faith in taking the property by condemnation to make this all possible. So I want to thank everybody in the council involved, Steve for his leadership, and for everyone who is a part of these two grants, so that's very exciting. Now, let's move ahead for subcommittee reports. So I don't know who was at what subcommittee, so we'll just go down the road. Maura, we'll start with you.
I'll take zoning. We very briefly discussed tonight's agenda item on the campground ordinances in the moratorium, and since there were no changes to the moratorium, most people talked about it.[1132.91]
Good evening. This is May 21, 2024 at 6:25. This meeting will be conducted in person in the Sanford City Council chambers and via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRSA Section 403B, 2D, and Section 6 of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedure. Members of the public may also submit comments via the City of Sanford website at www.samfordmain.org under government/citycouncil/contact the council. Would you please join me for a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And please join me for a moment of silence. And now we have three different sets of minutes. In order to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held May 2nd, May 7, 2024. Ann?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
May I have a second, please? Pete?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. In order to approve the minutes of executive session of the city council held on May 7, 2024 at 5:00 PM, may I have a motion, please? Nate?
So moved.
May I have a second? Pete?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. In order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the city council, a meeting held May 7, 2024 at 9:00 PM, and I want you to know that meeting lasted almost to 11:00 that night. So that was a long meeting. So may I have a motion, please? Jonathan?
Accept.
Thank you. Ann, the second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? All right. And just to let you know, Steve has to leave here by 9:30, so we're gonna try to move through this agenda at a reasonable speed. So I've got the mayor's report, and then you can get ready with your subcommittee reports. Oh, wait a minute. Roll call. I forgot one thing. Well, that would have made the meeting shorter, wouldn't it? Deputy Mayor Hurlahey?
Present.
Counsel Stacpo?
Present.
Counsel Hanselman?
Present.
Counsel Martell?
Present.
Counsel Trenchmontane?
Present.
Counsel Hitchcock?
Present.
And I am Mayor Brink, present also, or Steve, Manager Steve Buck and Executive Administrator Larissa Ricketts. All right, and now for the mayor's report. Seeing as this is the last meeting we have before Memorial Day, I usually like to do an education component, so this is some history about Memorial Day is an American holiday observed on the last Monday of May honoring the men and women who died while serving in the US military. Memorial Day 2024 will occur on Monday, May 27. And in case you didn't know, they're originally known as Declaration Day. It originated in the years following the Civil War and became an official federal holiday in 1971. Many Americans observe Memorial Day by visiting cemeteries or memorials holded by the families at gatherings, participating in parades, which I think we have several counselors who are gonna participate in the parade this Monday. This also unofficially marks the beginning of the summer session. And I'd like, summer season, I'd like to point out that we were at, what, 50 degrees yesterday, and now we're at 80 degrees and expecting to be 90 degrees tomorrow. So we definitely are just moving right into summer.
It's raining next week.
It's raining next week? And I've got two more items. For the past two years, we have had a homeless task force, has been meeting the first and the third Monday of every month. This group consists of multiple organizations with the goal to solve the homelessness in our community, using evidence-based strategies to collaborate and humanely address the housing and service needs of this population. Fortunately, many of Sanford's population, of this population, now have housing and the help they need because of the endless hours that have been devoted to this group of people. So I'd like to thank all those people and those organizations. On June 15, we will begin closing encampment at Heritage Crossing. There are several reasons for this. Number one, health and safety of the encampment residents. Number two, health and safety of the surrounding neighborhood. Number three, environmental health issues, because there is a presence of hazardous materials. We also worry about their physical safety because this is a flood zone and shoreland issues. To ensure the encampment is closed humanely, the encampment residents will be provided with verbal and written notices in plain language that is visible and posted multiple times. The warming center already verbally communicated this message. Housing navigators have and are still presently verbally communicating this message. The PD will have bike patrols in this area, and they will also be verbally communicating this message. On site, the day of the closing, the closure for the encampments, residents will be provided with the opportunity for intervention and prevention measures such as benefits like Medicare, SNAP benefits, WIC, housing vouchers, and other public systems that may serve the people to prevent homelessness. Next, assign case managers to provide ongoing support and connect residents with services. We'll also have pop-up tents in the area that will have resources available under them and people to help serve this community. So having said all that, now that we're gonna be clearing that, and I am just, I have to praise the people who have been involved in this, it has all been done with caring, really concern for this community and humanely. So stay tuned as the future Sanford Housing Authority under Diane Small is working on developing a 30-unit Housing First project for this site. So that is extremely exciting, and Steve will probably have more on this in his report. I was just gonna, wanting to give you a preview, so stay tuned for what's coming. And there's more great news. Sanford is really moving ahead. The city won the two brownfield grants for the Boiler House and continued assessment for $5.5 million. A shout-out to TRC, our consultants, for their tremendous efforts on the grant, plus the city staff for their great job that they have done, and the city council for taking a leap of faith in taking the property by condemnation to make this all possible. So I want to thank everybody, the council involved, Steve for his leadership, and for everyone who is a part of these two grants. So that's very exciting. Now, let's move ahead for subcommittee reports. So I don't know who was at what subcommittee, so we'll just go down the road. Maura, we'll start with you.
I'll take zoning. We very briefly discussed tonight's agenda item on the campground ordinances in the moratorium, and since there were no changes to the moratorium, most people talked about environmental, and that's not part of the moratorium, we felt there were no real issues to discuss, so we moved it forward back to the council for the second reading. The only other things we talked about was moving forward the excavation, so rural residential. Jamie kind of walked us through some of how the ordinance would be written based on what the planning board had discussed to allow for excavation businesses that are not attached to a single-family residence in the rural residential zones. So that'll be coming forward to the city council for a change, and again, it's, you know, along major routes, you know, that's not intended to disturb really truly rural areas, but to allow for businesses in places where it makes sense. We did discuss that, and so that should be coming forward in the future to the city
Yeah, Solid Waste Committee met last Tuesday. We mentioned this before, I mentioned this before, that we're working on a household hazardous waste cleanup day. We may have put this date out before, but it is scheduled, you can write this down, stick it on your refrigerator, whatever you want to do, is Sunday, June 30, this coming June, 2024. And I don't have the time zone here, Steve. Nine to 12, or? Okay. Now, everybody's gonna go, oh, Sunday, nine to 12, you know, that was the best we could do this time out. Okay, we came to the party late, let's say, this year. Next year, when we're gonna run this again, we'll have a lot more options for when we can do this and do it at a more convenient time. But this year, this was the only date that was available. It was either this or nothing, so we're giving it a try, getting it going. So this is household hazardous waste, okay? Poisons, harsh chemicals, you know, things you don't want. Flush down the toilet, dump down the sewer, dump in the lawn in the backyard, or in a big hole in the backyard, or however you do it. There will be a charge, and I don't have that information right in front of me right now, but we'll be getting out lots more information about this. And there'll be flyers, information on Facebook, all kinds of stuff, and it's our opportunity to get rid of some of that hazardous waste that's around the house.
Thank you. Ann?
Okay, so from my scintillating reports, property subcommittee met, the mayor, deputy mayor, and myself were in attendance. All agenda items have moved forward to tonight's meeting with consensus. However, there was also a brief discussion on future agenda items, which includes a food truck ordinance update, and also some design conversation about electrical access for food trucks in our community. And then we also discussed future discussion on ordinance and policies related to rental of city parks and facilities and exclusive use or quiet enjoyment of those facilities, specifically in relation to some issues at the farmer's market. Public Safety Subcommittee also met, Counsel Martell, myself, and the mayor were in attendance. We had a great update from dispatch. We are still almost fully staffed there, which is amazing to be the case. During April, the call volume was not insignificant, but I think typical. Calls for service were over 10,000, and 911 calls were over 2,400. The initial RFP for our new CAD system has gone out. We should see bids coming in here in May and June, which is exciting progress. There was also a very productive meeting of our fire and EMS chiefs last, on May 2, actually, recently, and let's see, the other big exciting news, and Mayor, I want to make sure I mention this for the ability to possibly embarrass this person, but Megan Welch, one of our supervisors at dispatch, was awarded a full scholarship to attend the NENA 911 Association Conference this year, which is really exciting news, and it's in Orlando, so hopefully she'll get some sunshine when she's there.
And it might be too hot, yeah.
And then I just want to mention that dispatch, along with the fire department, shared that they're doing a lot of public education and community outreach coming up, and it's really nice to see that that's part of the work that they're doing here in our community. AC Smith did another great presentation for the fire department. A couple things of note with that presentation is that the fire department, as many of the folks here tonight know, has been doing a lot of training. This past month, that included some white, or not whitewater, water rescue training that they did with help from the YMCA as well as other trainings. There were 506 incidents in April, which is on par with typical, 53% of which continue to be EMS-related, which again is kind of standard at this point for our calls. In terms of the police department, DC Small was able to complete with the help of others and 80 hours of staff time to grants, which hopefully we'll get good news on here in the future. I did learn a new thing, which is that our SRO Officer Jordaine is not only working in our schools with our students, but is also doing training with local businesses and helping them with safety plans, which I thought was really interesting, and I learned some new things from his presentation. Officer Buckland gave us a really thorough traffic officer update, and I did print that out for all of our counselors, and I just wanted to mention it as somebody, as time goes on, I just really want to make sure that our Public Safety Committee remembers the investment in that position, the impact it's making in our community, and make sure we continue funding it. The last thing I'll mention is that Chief Anderson did share, and the fire department also, our Chief Susie talked about the fact that there's some public safety issues, or were public safety issues, at Heritage Crossing within the mill building there, and just concern over folks inside that property and discussion of moving forward, because it is a dangerous building that we had deemed previously, moving forward was sweeping, making sure no one's there, and then boarding that up, and I think that happened today, Steve. And that's it, thank you.
And I wanted to point out, one of the things that was mentioned at the meeting was the speeding that was going down Emery Street, and because of it, I noticed today, and I love those little light-up things that tell you what your speed is, because I try to come right on the dot of whatever it is, so it's a challenge to me. And there were two police cruisers there pulling speeders over, so I really appreciate it, it was just mentioned just the other day at the subcommittee meeting, and they were right on it. So Chief, thank you very much for taking care of that, really appreciate it. Moving right along, Pete?
Yeah, on the fire station feasibility subcommittee, we're six months out to a vote. So now we're gonna be working with Chief and Steve Buck to do a unified subcommittee report after this one. Right now, what we come up with is there's certain places that Chief Susie and the assistants and some of council can go and actually educate, the Traffin Center, Mayflower, Maple. Those sites, we will be looking at to do it in October, so it's fresh, and it's not to, say, vote for it, it's to educate, so they have a right to say yes or no. So we'll take it directly to the voters. We're gonna look at seeing if we can hit, like, Elks, Lafayette, some of the bigger clubs, the Spring Grill, and that way, there's question and answers, we can go right to the fire, and you guys can answer why you need it, because obviously you are experts, and I think this'll do a lot of good. And right now, it's coming down to about a cup of coffee that is gonna cost you about $4.50, the increase, so we're making good headway. This is a good thing, and that's what I have right now. Thank you.
I'd also like to point out that if we get a yes vote in November, it allows us to apply for grants and other funding, so both state and federal. So even when you see the cost of the two fire stations, we will be going out and applying for those grants. And I would like to point out that the counselor, counselors had just, by condemnation, I got the term right, taken over the Boiler House, we were able to apply for $5.5 million worth of grants because we had already taken that over. So we had said yes to that. So if we could get the city to say yes to the two fire stations, we can move ahead and start applying for grants. So with all the voters out there who are listening, please keep that in mind and spread the word around that we do need your yes vote. All right, any other subcommittees that I'm missing?
Well, the only thing I wanted to say about the fire station, eventually, we're not gonna be able to have to have a vote on this, because OSHA just changed everything, and we're gonna be held responsible for our fire stations that are not under OSHA. There's no one here that can say we can pass OSHA at the fire stations. So the fines will be coming, they're gonna be adjusted, so the voters out there, we gotta nail this now because it's gonna cost us a lot more trickle-down effect paying these fines for these buildings that are definitely 160 years old that are outdated. So this is things that are coming along that we have to be ready for, and we have to avoid it at all costs.
So Pete, you're probably saying that as soon as we can get this done, and we can apply for the other grants that are out there, our competition would be less than if we wait when OSHA steps in and says all these other fire stations have to be rebuilt.
We're also looking at insurance increases for property owners, the ISOs are gonna go up because we can't provide certain coverage. So this is all a ripple effect. So the voters out there, we're not trying to snooker you. One of the reasons I ran is we needed two stations and a bunch of other things, but this is so necessary, and it's gonna be very costly for you down the road if we all say no. So it's a little different than, ah, they don't need two fire stations. Yes, they do. And our firefighters are getting very sick, and they still show up every day, so you should probably give them a round of applause for still showing up when you call 911. They know what they're risking, and we do too, so we're trying very hard to educate the entire city of Sanford and Village of Springville, so you'll understand how desperate that this needs to be done. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Pete. End of the subcommittee reports? Great, okay. We're moving right along to Steve Buck, he's gonna do the city manager report and the homelessness update, and Steve, feel free to correct anything that I pre-told about.
Okay. So first, I wanted to touch first on the Brownfield, Brownsfield programs. That information, we've known, well, a few of us have known for about a month, but it's been embargoed until yesterday. So it was supposed to have been last week embargo kept, was remained, so we're looking for it on Monday, looking, looking, looking. Larissa Jordan and I were meeting about 1:00. What the heck is the information? Jordan goes clickety-click, oh, here's three links for you. Yeah, okay, yep. So anyway, so we have the information now, but, so there's two significant pieces in here. The first is an assessment grant, an area-wide assessment grant. This is probably Sanford's fourth in the recent years of $500,000. Significant, because a lot of work has gotten done with those assessment grants. We are well-known by EPA, and has actually received Escalades and awards for this, for having expended the funds properly. So we use that for Phase 1, Phase 2 assessments for new development, comes in and allows us to eradicate the environmental liability, get remediation plans in place so that those previously contaminated properties can be redeveloped, anything from a dry cleaners facility to the historic mills and/or others. Gas stations fall under there as well. So we have brownfields scattered all across our community. The CGA site probably is the site of most perseverance in that the city took that back in the 90s. Absent a plan, said, well, this'll be easy, we'll get this cleaned up, is just gone under solar development this year, so they're building the solar arrays on there now. There's EPA funds in there, there's a VRAP in there, there's DEP funds that were given to clean the site up, we had to return back. Hasn't been done before, we returned it back and then came back and was awarded funds subsequently after we got work done through DEP. So, long story short, we partner well with all of these agencies. The city's proven its capacity, and I believe that's why we continue to be successful in our applications.
I think it's amazing, Steve, what's gonna be happening down at the Boiler site and where Diane Small is gonna be building Housing First, is gonna change the whole appearance of that area and make it more of a beautiful walking area, too. So thank you for your hard work on that.
So the next is the $5 million award of cleanup grants. So city put its poker face on, we have been holding on that, the Boiler House, for a number of years. We knew the cost, we had, we had pre-engineered that, was $4.9 million. STACK was taken down a little over a year ago, to get that hazard out of place, but still, it was about $4.9 million worth of work, because it's not just taking the Boiler down, it's the extent of contamination that's there. It was noted in the press release that we should recognize the significant investments, excuse me, that the International Wool Mill Boiler House located at Pioneer Ave, the cleanup, is operated at a Boiler House with coal-fired boilers that were converted to fuel oil in the 1920s. It is contaminated with volatile organic compounds, inorganic contaminants, heavy metals, polycyclic aromatic compounds, and light non-aqueous phase liquids, yeah, and asbestos. The massive boilers in there are completely entombed in asbestos.
Is that the reason it's gonna cost so much money, is because of the?
So you've got to take the Boiler House out, you've got to take all that contamination out, there's two large bunker C tanks still in place as part of that. Pioneer Ave has to be preserved and shored up and refoot it, because the building, the abutments in the building are shoring up Pioneer Ave, so that's part of that cost. And then, once the contaminated soils are taken out of there, it'll be a cap in place, so the parking lot will become, so 68 new spaces in that allotment, and the end product is a parking lot that's available for the Sanford Mill Complex. So, but the act of taking it by condemnation, I had held that off for quite a number of years until the timing was right. Typically, you could only get cleanup grants in the amount of $2.5 million, so the city would have had to affront somehow another $2.5 million, borrow that, or come up with that out of general taxation. This is, this was viewed by everybody to be a one-time occurrence, so under the American Infrastructure Act, significant sums of money were put to the EPA to address lingering issues. We bellied up with two applications, we were told by our environmental consultants that likely you might get one, or you might get the other, but you will never get two, and we did. So kudos, kudos for us for having the capacity and the recognition by EPA to allow us to have those funds. Being competitive, I did have to look at the entire Region 1 awards. The only other award of our magnitude was to Lowell Mass. We trumped everybody else other than Lowell Mass. They get the $5.5 million just as we did. But, so for this one year, this one award cycle only, there was $5 million, up to a $5 million cap. So we hit our mark, we were competitive, and we were awarded the funds. So I want to thank EPA. We do anticipate that they're gonna come to Maine again to do the big check awards. Typically, they come here to Sanford, they've approached us about that, so hopefully the big checks will be here in these council chambers here over the next couple of weeks.
Steve, how soon after you get the fake check, does the city really get the real check, or do we just submit as we go?
Well, the funds will become available October 1st.
Okay, all right.
So this, so the assessment grant will allow us to continue to employ the technical environmental assessment. We use TRC under that right now in partnership with future developers to remediate and build back upon these potentially contaminated brownfield sites. And the cleanup grant of the former International Wool Mill Boiler House, the city took the site by condemnation, as I spoke of. And Growth Council is gonna take a lead role as far as those projects are concerned, going forward in the future, working on the future development in that significant cleanup. Myself will stay included in that, Ronnie and Aaron and the whole team stay in on the admin side. So Region 1, EPA to Boston announced that there was $33 million awarded into Maine, $22 million went by competitive grants to municipalities, and 11 went to supplement the continuing Brownsfield revolving loan fund, such as through SMPDC here in Southern Next, I know our Economic Development Director, Keith McBride, is coming here tonight, so I won't report out on one of the items that I had in there for the expansion in the industrial park, but I will pick up on the second item in there. We previously had talked about the York County Community College was recently awarded significant funds through CDS funding, as well as through the Maine Defense Industry Alliance that was formed specifically to build a brand-new welding training center there at the York County Community College campus in Sanford. Yes, there is a YCCC campus in Sanford, it's at 60 Community Drive. They're doing technical training there now, and this will further expand that, specific to providing trained students, trained individuals towards the defense industry, such as Bath Iron Works, Portsmouth Naval Shipyard, Pratt &amp; Whitney, CDS are highly technical and well-sought-after jobs. So they, I just wanted to bring that up because the environmental impact statement came across my desk this past week, and they've achieved that next mile marker. Also, we've had a lot of movement over the last couple of weeks around the asylum seekers in Sanford. It was May 5 of last year that we hit that mark of about 150 people arriving here on a Friday afternoon, standing outside our doors, for which the city had never experienced anything like that, didn't have systems in place. And we, by 10:00 that night, we had every individual housed. So kudos to the team that surrounded that, Sanford Police Department, the Police Department, the Mental Health Unit, and other officers responded immediately. Sanford Housing Authority, York County Community Action, York County Shelter Program. We had just a part-time GA Director at that point in time. Our current Director stepped in, has having worked there in the past. A part-time Director spoke Portuguese and Portuguese and French. So we got by for that night. It was a Herculean effort. And I marveled. So we just, the Public Broadcasting Corporation was just here shooting a large documentary about the arrival of asylum seekers in Maine and what that's meant. They came here specifically to Sanford because we stood up systems that weren't there before. So when I went back and pulled the summary of information, I marveled in that in a seven-day span, we set all the pre, all the systems that were not in place that we're using today was set up in seven days. That was, that was quite, quite an effort. And I can't thank enough the partners that we have that I mentioned here earlier as far as providing the services, the coordination, and the efforts by all of those entities for which our city could not have done that, absent our partners. So we've got a lot of attention about that. I also did an interview with, is it Ari Fleischer? No, Ari. I apologize, Ari. Anyways, Maine Public Broadcasting, the main network, he did an interview on that.
Snyder.
Snyder. Ari Schneider?
Snyder.
Snyder, yes. And then we talked with Matt Gonyea as well and whatnot. And I know that we came across well with that. Next, I'd like to talk about the Fire Department. As Councilor Trish Montaigne mentioned, we continue to work on the marketing materials of that for the November referendum. We're getting ready to roll those out for June, the June 4th council meeting. In there, we'll have the educational slogans. Took a while. It always takes a while for it to get to people to lock in on the tagline and font signs, all that sort of thing. So we'll have the educational slogans, updates on the informational flyers, the handouts, information, updates on the informational videos. We continue to amend those. WBARC, our architectural firm and engineering firm on this, has offered their marketing affiliations and associated with us gratis. So they're contributing significantly to the creation of those materials. We envision an ad campaign that will go out and one of those locations will be at Smithy's Theater, starting here in the very near future, running a minute-long campaign in there for every movie in every theater from now through the election. Site renderings, they're working on additional site renderings. We're going to have an unveiling both in Springville and at the Sanford site. Garner, the news media, to be there for those unveilings. We'll put up the large renderings on the site, future site of, with the renderings of each of the stations that's envisioned to be on each of those two locations. So all of that is in the pipeline. As was mentioned earlier, it's no longer a question of if. For me, it's no longer a question of when. So the when issue is now. The new OSHA regulations that are sitting out there pending now is going to force that hand sooner than later. You will find that in the near future, you may not, as a community, have a choice of voting yes or no on this. It's just going to have to happen. The other critical point that was, that was mentioned is we can't reduce the cost of this until I have a yes vote in November. That's one of the most critical pieces for people to understand. It's a big sum of money. It is manageable. It's going to hurt in the first three years of the debt service, depending on how we time this up. But the most critical point is without a yes, I can't apply to USDA. I can't go to the congressional delegation for CDS spending. I can't go to HUD. I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't, right? But with a yes vote, we can. And if we use that leveraged funding in the first three years of the cycle, we can cap our debt service to no different than it is today at just about a dollar, dollar per thousand in the overall mill rate impact. So we've examined that. We have the capacity to carry this. It's about the timing. It's about a, and it's about a yes vote in November and then the reduction. So you might say we've been fairly close with our congressional delegation for congressional discretionary spending, congressional direct spending, CDS. And we've been strongly encouraged to look at making an application for the spring of 2025. So a yes vote is critical for all of that. Jordan is working also as part of that is a cup of coffee campaign. She actually found another situation, another station that had used that equivalent, that when you think about it in the big picture, here's what a cup, a cup of coffee costs. And if, and one of those per month funds the stations and such under that. So we found examples of that. I found them to be very powerful and very good examples. And she found a minute 21 second video that was similar to what we want to envision for the Smithy's Theater that was highly, highly effective. So there's a lot of good examples out there for taking our information, specific to us, and being able to communicate that to the public. I'd also like to announce that we've been working with the Southern Maine Agency on Aging for a lease at the Anderson Learning Center. We were able to ink that today. Actually had an effective date of May 15th, but they will be putting in adult day programming at the Anderson Learning Center. They offer those services in Bitterford now, but for people in our general region, they have to traverse all the way to Bitterford and it's a hardship for many families that need those services. So they will be coming to our Anderson Learning Center, hopefully stood up here in June. We don't know the grand opening or ribbon cutting date yet, but I'll let you know on that so that people can be there and be present. So they also offer meals on wheels, Medicare counseling, case management, and group support services for predominantly senior adults. All right. And then I had the information in here about the press releases from the Brownfield and I'll send those out shortly. For the homeless task force, a lot of information has been presented here already this evening. Additional information that I'll offer on that is we've been down to a smaller group as of late because there's been significant heavy lifting that needed to be done. So that's been our Sanford Police Department, Sanford Housing Authority, the York County Shelter Program, the York County Community Action Corporation, and City Administration. And of course, our Mayor Brink has been with us through all of that. We focused our work as of late around the closure of the Warming Center. That closed on May 1st. I want to thank and congratulate the York County Shelter Program. They housed over 60% of the individuals that had been occupying that over the winter. So significant gains there. And I find and I note, as is the example, that the individuals that weren't housed, were not housed because they chose not to take services. Capacity was identified and was there, but that, that's where we have to leave that. Sanford Police Department started a two-person, two-officer patrol starting, that was started on Monday by either pedestrian or bike to be concentrated in our downtown. They're there specifically to make continuous contact with individuals throughout the region, offering information about resource availability, not different from what the Mental Health Unit was focusing on here a short while ago, but this will supplement that. They'll be working with the MHU and Sergeant Adams as far as that programming. And we find that by making constant contact, building a level of trust with individuals out there, when the timing is and they're willing to take services, the services are there, they're offered, and we can get them to those services timely, make that connection to the housing navigators and the coordinated case entry and management. Next is the Heritage Crossing Encampment. That is our focus at this point in time. For all of the reasons that was discussed here earlier, it's, it's a health hazard. It's a safety hazard. It is a disservice to allow people to continue to be there. We've had housing navigators and case management in that encampment on a regular basis, working with individuals, encouraging them to take on services. Our partnering service providers have truly wrapped around the coordination. There's regular coordinated meetings on the case management, the housing navigators, food services. They're coordinated on where the resources are for full-time apartments to put individuals into once they accept services. And I think the, the large point that we struck upon on Monday as well was Diane Small offered us the 19 Strategies for Communities to Address Encampments humanely and effectively. Those federal standards are put out by the U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness. And I want to compliment Diane within the day. She sent us back all of the draft on that program. It's amazing to see what we already had in place and how well we were following that roadmap. And now we've applied that. There's only a couple of small items on there that we need to address in order to complete that, that, that template. Again, I spoke to you about the coordination of the coordinated entry and case management, which was one of my earliest concerns. That's coming well and working well. Housing navigation across the multiple agencies, food services, and apartment resources, and sheltered services being coordinated. I have been working with the York County Shelter Program to bring to the city council, hopefully by the next meeting, a cooperative agreement whereby our general services, if a person qualifies for emergency housing, we would assign them to the York County Shelter and an expanded program over there at less than a third of the cost of what it typically would cost us. And that would be, come with full meal services and the critical part, coordinated case entry and case management and housing navigation. It gets them more rapidly into the system to get them permanently housed as opposed to if they're housed in a hotel, they don't have those wraparound services there. So much more cost-effective use of the general assistance program in a much more effective mechanism by doing it in that manner. So I'll bring that to you hopefully by the June 4th meeting. And lastly, I will offer that I was engaged, I engaged with the Maine State Housing. We had the Maine State Housing Authority Director, Dan Brennan. We also had Greg Payne, the, from the Governor's Office of Innovation, the Deputy Director from the Maine State Housing Authority, as well as, I didn't put her name down here and I apologize. Miss, I think it's Busterd, facilitated the meeting for us. He was specifically there at the closure of the state legislative process. There was a lot of money put towards housing in general, specific categories of housing and to address homelessness as well. But we find from our December 2023 forum that the award of those funds went into some of the wrong categories, not in the most critical areas for our shelter programs that we were needed. So in that conference, I spoke to them extensively about what we see for shortcomings in the system, where we truly need, we still need to address the million-dollar gap for our York County Shelter Program here in, that's operated out of Alfred. As we talked about them, I talked with them about that extensively as well as for the need for street outreach workers. So we have our Mental Health Unit that's been doing that over the years. We have two offices dedicated now for the summer doing that as well. We need funding for those street outreach workers that make the connectivity for the coordinated case entry and management as well as the housing navigation. So there's barely a day that doesn't go by that this is in the focus of the work here at the city. And again, I have to compliment the partners of York County Community Action, the Shelter Program, and the Sanford Housing Authority for being with us every step of the way. It takes all of us to make this work and it's, and that work is progressing very well. Thank you.
Two things, Steve, as I want to make a comment about. The building that's beside the boiler, we had issues with the homeless population trying to go in there. So we are now going to be boarding that up. First of all, there's no sprinkler system that works in there. It's a very dangerous building.
We're securing the International Woolen Mill, the large building itself.
All right.
So we've been sweeping that for occupancy. You look at the photographic evidence of what's been taking place in there. It will horrify you. So Police Department, Fire Department, and Public Works are working on coordinating, ensuring that everybody is, is out of that building and then working to secure it. They will violate that security of the building, guarantee it, but we've got to take every effort that we can to reduce the number of people that are making access inside of that building. Sprinkler systems are no longer operational there. Those went down this past winter. It is probably one of the largest hazards, hazard sitting here in our community. And I know the Police Department has wrapped an action plan around that building already. So, but I hope that they never have to exercise that.
Thank you. And the second thing was, we discussed at several of our meetings, when people bring food down to the encampments, when you bring clothing down to the encampment, you are hindering the population, their, their growth and their willingness to come out and seek help. So if you want to be involved in feeding the homeless population, contact the shelter. You can contact Sanford Housing and they can refer you to the right facility where you can go in and do it in a very productive and helpful way so that the population will be willing to seek help. Also, clothing, most of the clothing that you're donating winds up in, as part of the trash. So it's not helping, including some of the food winds up as part of the trash down there. So it really is not helpful. So I know it makes us feel good to take stuff down and donate, but, so we really have to think about it. It is not productive. So if we could, if you really have that need, contact these, to the Shelter Organization and the Housing Authority and they can direct you in the right direction. So.
Can I capitalize on that?
Yes.
So we, we learned that by day six of the asylum seekers, the unsolicited volunteerism and solic, and giving of resources that happened outside of the coordinated system. So we had to rapidly wrap our arms around those people that wanted to do good things, but it had to go through the organized system. And once that was done, there was a network of people helping out with that situation on an ongoing basis to this day. We still have that with our unhoused resident Mainers. People are trying to do good things. They believe they are. They're trying to, but it's outside of the organized system and it's actually being detrimental. So there is an organized system that they can be part of, that could provide that benefit without the detrimental aspects of that. So we're working to address that.
Thank you. Now, under Communications and Presentations, penning ceremony. Scott Soucy is our Fire Chief. If you want to come on down and we're going to do, it looks like a Fire Department lieutenant promotion, take over. And by the way, it's fantastic to see everybody dressed really nicely. So thank you guys for showing up and the great numbers. I don't know if the audience on TV can see it, but we have about 15 firefighters here.
Well, thank you very much. Jeff, come up. Sam?
By the way, I didn't hear the young lady's name.
Caroline.
Caroline. That is a fantastic dress. So thank you for wearing a dress here. You look really good.
You're popular already. Mayor, Mr. Buck, Council, at the end of May, after 24 years of service, Lieutenant Stephen Willett will be retiring from the city of Sanford, opening a lieutenant's position. It is my privilege to introduce our newest City of Sanford Fire Lieutenant, firefighter, paramedic Jeffrey Roble. Lieutenant Roble is, excuse me, has been with the Sanford Fire Department for seven years. During those seven years, Lieutenant Roble has proven to be a strong asset, professional, and a leader within the department. The current lieutenant's list is comprised of six dedicated, professional, hard-working members through a competitive process. Lieutenant Roble has earned the number one spot and has proven to be knowledgeable, motivated, eager to gain experience when filling in as acting lieutenant or T-SOAR since making the list in 2023 testing process. Lieutenant Roble possesses mentoring abilities, pride in his job, and dedicates his time to continuously develop his leadership skills and education. It is my honor to congratulate Lieutenant Jeffrey Roble and his family, his wife, Sam, and his daughter, Caroline. So please help me congratulate them.
And are there other family members here?
Nope.
Okay. So could we get a picture of you with the chief, the family with the chief?
We're gonna swear him in as well.
Oh, fantastic. Jeffrey, please raise your right hand.
Mike, he's got a camera.
Jeffrey Roble, having served the city of Sanford proudly for the past seven years as a certified firefighter and paramedic, and most recently as the TSOR officer on B shift for many months, is now ready to begin a new chapter of his firefighter career as the B shift officer. Do you, Jeffrey Roble, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Maine so long as you shall continue a citizen thereof?
I do.
And do you, Jeffrey Roble, swear that you will faithfully discharge, to the best of your abilities, the duties incumbent upon you as the lieutenant for the city of Sanford Fire Department according to the Constitution and laws of this state and in all respects shall observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the city of Sanford?
I do. Thank you very much.
And did you get pictures?
Do you want a picture?
Sure.
Yes. Somebody has, there we go.
Come closer, come closer. Want a good photo. Make sure Jordan get it.
All right. Thank you. And I know very well that the fire department is a family. So in my mind, I am picturing that all the people here are going to be very supportive of our new lieutenant. So thank you.
Allergies.
Scott, do you have another speech?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
No, it's allergies. I would like to say thank you for the continued support. And it went out this week. This is National EMS Week and thank everybody for what they do on a daily basis for all the citizens of the city of Sanford.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll just wait a minute for those people who would like to leave. And just so Keith is next up, we'll do the quarter report and presentation from the director and the small business advocate for Sanford Regional Economic Growth Council, and that will be Keith McBride. And Mary Hastings, are you going to join him? Excellent.
So thank you very much. I'm Keith McBride, Director of Your Growth Council. With me tonight is Mary Hastings, our small business advocate. I know that the council was interested in hearing some of her activities. So we've kind of split the presentation tonight. We're each gonna take a couple of minutes to talk about some things. And I have a thing. Hold on. Wait a minute. There it is. So I'm gonna try to be really brief with this to make sure we touch on some of the other activities, specifically the ones that Mary is working on. But I'm first up to bat, so here we go. Earlier this month, there was a new jobs report from the Bureau of Labor, I'm blanking on the S, Bureau of Services Statistics. Thank you. That's it. Bureau of Labor Statistics, they issue a jobs report every so often. It was interesting in that it showed slower than expected job growth and particularly in the new openings. So having a decline in the job growth and decline in openings is an indication of a slowdown in the job market. And also other reports are showing slower than expected GDP growth through the first quarter. So we're seeing indications that there should be a reduction in inflation and yet in the last four months, we've seen no reduction in inflation whatsoever. In fact, the deceleration that had taken place towards the end of 2023 kind of paused. So this isn't great economic news, but at least it's leading investors to believe that the Fed will take action sooner rather than later to reduce interest rates, which could spur some new investment and also move us forward on the inflation issue that's been hampering us on a very local level. So that's a quick look at the macroeconomic trends. We're seeing local impact here and of course, you know, the job market being one of the biggest ones, there's still a lot of businesses here in the community that have available positions that they're not filling. So a quick look at our priorities and our work plans, some of the stuff that we've been doing. It's been a very, very active quarter for us. We've had a tremendous amount of activity and I'm gonna leave a lot of that to Mary because I think it was six months ago that I came to you in one of these reports and said that the activity we're seeing had shifted from being larger industrial users and large businesses and shifted down to smaller entrepreneurial and small business expansion and relocation inquiries. And I think at the time I said, my hope is that in six months to a year, I'll come to you and we'll talk about all these new businesses we have opening up. And we have a lot of those to talk about tonight. It's been, it's been a really exciting period for us. On the public-private partnership side, of course, Steve talked about the Brownfields grant, which we were able to, the two Brownfields grants that we were awarded. This is a massive investment in public-private partnerships. We see the Brownfields program as being funding that's available to help incentivize private investment in properties here in Sanford by taking some of the burden and some of the liability of some of the environmental issues that exist in these properties off of them and then working with them to get them remediated and cleaned and back into productive uses. So we're excited to see that work happen, especially the work at the Boiler House that Steve touched on, which will absolutely transform the Mill District area. Mary's also gonna touch on another exciting grant opportunity revolving around our facade grant program. But since she won't say this, I want to say that much to the point of how we were high potential grantees in the Brownfields program because of our reputation in Sanford of using that program well, the reason I think that we were able to obtain another facade grant program is because when they came here to audit us, the people from DECD said, you are so well organized and you've done such a great job with this, we want you to please apply for more. And that is 100% due to Mary's efforts on that program. So we're developing the same kind of relationship within the CDBG program at the state that I think we've done with the EPA and the Brownfields program. So on a slightly smaller scale, but still a very important program when it comes to economic development. And Mary is very much to thank for that. And I think it's gonna pay off big dividends going forward as we look for new ways to utilize CDBG for our community. So I also want to touch on the economic development, market analysis and action plan, which is a component of our, the beginning of our comprehensive plan process. That process is underway and we're very much looking forward to getting that action plan piece back as it will highlight some more action items and target projects to complete that fall within these priorities that are listed up there, especially the ones that are in bold. We see that as being very instructive to us and we participated thus far in the information gathering process that they're going through to put that plan together and will also be participating in the comprehensive plan process as well. We also see that as critically important. I wanted to touch on a couple of local economic activity. Mary and I are kind of splitting this portion of it. I wanted to talk about some larger projects, more on the industrial side, and Mary I know is gonna talk about some of the small business things. We've had a project that was approved here on Cyro Drive for a battery storage use that was approved through our planning board. They've been ready to look into putting that building up and it's a grid process, I'm sorry, a grid project that is gonna help us take a lot of the clean energy that we're developing here in Sanford through solar and storing it. And that's one of the big things that really rocket boost the utility of solar power generation is having storage opportunities. What they're waiting on is more guidance and more feedback from the governor's energy office that is kind of being a little bit slow in issuing some of that. So there's not much we can do to force the governor's energy office's hand. However, we had a good meeting with the folks from the battery storage and they've asked that we please issue a letter of support and encouragement that they bring those incentives and other guidelines forward on how they want to see these battery storage projects happen. I spoke with Steve and suggested that that be a joint letter from both the Growth Council and the city of Sanford, and that was agreeable and that we're gonna be working on that and make sure that it is made available to not only the governor's energy office, but our legislative delegation in Augusta and to the city council so that you can see what we're proposing and why. That letter will be clear on why this is an important, an important thing to have happen, not just for Sanford, but statewide. It does benefit, does benefit far beyond our community's borders. And lastly, I will, I put it as under other activity because I wasn't sure how much I was gonna be allowed to say, but what I am allowed to say is that finally, after about eight years of attempts, the Industrial Development Corporation successfully closed on a 38 acre piece of land on the west side of Eagle Drive to expand the existing industrial park. This is a, was a high priority for the IDC for many years. It took a lot of work and a lot of pushing when they got it done. It's a huge accomplishment for the IDC, but it also means that there's an awful lot of work to be done there before we can have lots that are ready to develop. There is simple industrial subdivision that needs to be done so that we actually have lot lines. And we also have to do some infrastructure work so that there is the necessary utilities and other things there to support the type of development, not to mention the marketing and the outreach that the Growth Council is ready and capable of doing to get the types of businesses into those lots that I know would benefit the community with good jobs and good development. So with that, I would like to hand it off to Mary to touch on some other, wait a minute, there it is, some other local activities specifically revolving around small businesses in our downtown. So thank you, Mary.
Hi, Mayor. Steve and councilors, thank you for allowing me to come and talk about the small business advocacy, that title that I have now. I specifically picked just these four. These are probably the four major things that take up the most of my time. At this point, everybody should know about Friends of Downtown. We've been around for about three years now. We do a lot of activities downtown, a lot of programs that we put on normally will always to highlight our Sanford businesses and to get people into our Sanford businesses. Over and over again, we hear that, gee, we didn't know that business was there. Over and over again, we hear from our businesses that they saw an uptick in business while we were running one of our events. The next event we're working on is the car show, which everybody absolutely loves. It's a great fundraiser for us. And we also tag on to other events. We've done events at the Bike Fest or at the Sanford Police Department's National Night Out, always just to make those, you know, types of activities larger. Most recently, we've, Friends of Downtown and the Growth Council have conducted, I am, I'm sorry, a business meeting for the hub grant that we were a part of. So it was a coordination between the two entities. From that hub grant that we did in that meeting that we did that night, 26 Sanford businesses applied for recovery grant dollars. 15 businesses of the 26 were helped. And, which also leads me into Heart and Soul. So in 2022, we did become a community heart and soul community. We have been going through and kind of, we went through phase one, we set up a lot of things that needed to be set up in there. We are now in phase two. That has been story collecting. Hopefully, a lot of people have heard about that too. And we are now moving over into, it's beginning phase three. So by the end of June, we're hoping to get, we have all of those stories. We've been collecting them. We are extracting statements from those stories. We're gonna see some of those statements that just continue to repeat themselves. So we'll know what's important, what's most important to the citizens of Sanford. And from there, we will be able to produce a document that will say, this is what your community input is in, is, this is what your community wants. So from that report, not only does that help with the comprehensive plan that we're underway, that is underway, but it also can help in any grant efforts that you need community participation in. I know Kat Ingraham, who is helping us, she did a plan up in Mahusik. I don't remember exactly the numbers, but I want to say it's between six and seven million dollars that they were able to get in small grants by using the data that they collected and also passed out to other community organizations, you know, like maybe the Y would want to use it or Strategies or someone like that. So that's, it's pretty exciting. On the business advocacy side and through Friends of Downtown and through Heart and Soul, I've got to meet with a lot of business owners now. So I'm finally feeling like people are calling the Growth Council if they want to do something, if they want to open a business, want to expand a business, if they need help. If they don't come with an entourage of consultants and architects, we could also do a better job. I do get calls from people who say, I wished I knew you were here when I started the process. So, but certainly in getting there. Recently, I've been able to work with, of course, Muslim River Street Bistro, who has just finally gotten all of their state in their local permits, has had a tough time getting contractors to come and work for him, but had an appointment yesterday with another contractor who, hopefully that's gonna, that's gonna be moving on. I don't know if you've noticed the new sign, Knots and Bolts. That's Vicky Parier, who is opening a craft store, fabric store, is gonna do some, maybe some sewing classes or something like that. So it's great to see that that window is not vacant any longer. We helped with Downhill Bagel that just opened. We're also helping the Arts Commission or Committee kind of look at their business plan. They have, they just did a survey of artists that would like to have a co-op space. They're looking at that still in the Anderson, in the Anderson Learning Center. So I'm trying to help them along with getting that, to see if that is self-sustainable. And working on Guerrero Mayan, he's right down to his last, I think he's, I have to ask him, but he needed his health, his health on the state level, his health license. So I think that on Monday that they went in for that. So we'll be seeing him coming for his liquor license. So finally, he can open. Very excited about that one. And then we also worked on a few large projects. We've been working with the owners over at Jagger Mill. We've been, worked for a while on Chase Bank, going into the Burger King location and another technology company that's interested in the industrial park. So both large and small. Next is a facade grant that I'd like to talk about. So in 2022, the city did apply for a facade grant and they actually were turned down, but I didn't want to take no for an answer. So I talked with Terry Anne and convinced her that the Growth Council could take that on and she then called me back. We were about four months, four and a half months behind the curve, but she, they did finally award us that $100,000. So I started working on that right away. It was tough to get people to want to do anything with that, even though I could give them 75 cents on the dollar. But finally, first, the gentleman that owns the old 7-Eleven used grant money to, now we have the T-Mobile. The second was 41 Washington Street, which is, used to be boarded up. I'm not exactly sure it used to be in there, but you can see all the glass. We also helped the Bistro do their painting, all their outside work and put in those great windows. And then lastly, we just had Sanford Brake and Tire, right on the other side of City Hall, apply to finish up his facade work. So we'll see that transform. They tell, his contractor just got the notice to proceed on May 15th. They should be done by the end of June. So I do have roughly about $8,200 left in that grant before I can close it out. So if anybody's watching, if anybody needs that money, that can be a downtown business. It has to be commercial on the first floor. I can, I can help them with signage, I can help them with facade, I can help them even with roof repairs, those types of things. But I would like to spend that by June 30th. That would be, it would be good for Sanford to have all that closed out, which brings me to facade grant 2024. So I went ahead and applied about a month ago. I was here for the hearing, for the public hearing. We were asked to go ahead and apply. We were asked to go ahead and apply. I did, and about two and a half weeks later, I got the award letter. So we do have another $100,000 coming, and very excited. I'm going to continue doing facades for this grant. I'll apply for them as long as they'll allow me to. I wanted to do a little bit of streetscape, but I thought it was a little premature. I'm going to wait for the raise grant to come through and make sure whatever we're doing, you know, complements that. So we'll be working again on facades for this next $100,000. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Does anyone have any questions? All right, moving right along. Is there public participation? Nothing? No one with their hands raised? Okay, fantastic. And Mary, don't go away because you are up next. A public hearing, I'm going to be opening a public hearing to solicit comments on the receipt of $100,000 State of Maine Community Enterprise CDBG grant to improve commercial facades in the downtown, and I think you just spoke on this. So what we need is, is there anyone else to speak in favor of this? Anyone to speak against? Seeing there is none, I declare this public hearing closed. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
And the next public hearing is to receive a public comment on the Sixth Amendment to the Sanford Downtown Municipal Development and Tax Increment Financing District to establish the downtown district as an omnibus to allow the city to enter into future credit enhancement agreements with individual commercial property owners within the district at additional project costs and extend the term for the district to 30 years. And Keith McBride, you're going to be explaining this?
I can speak to it quickly, yes. So this original district, our downtown district, was established in 2006 for 20 years, so it would be set to expire in 2026, sorry, and during which a good portion of the early years, this had captured absolutely zero value because it was actually, because of some changes in the market, and there was no increase in valuation over that time. So we haven't really gotten the full benefits of having a downtown district in place, of which there are many. There have been many amendments over time, most of them involving removing property from this district to create a new separate district so that the city can engage in credit enhancement agreements with particular businesses and developers for those particular lots, something that was going on. For example, the project most recently approved that where we did that was the Central Park Apartments with Reincorp to do 30 units of housing over there. We had to take that, those lots that that project is proposed on, out of the downtown, create it as a separate district so that we could enter into those agreements with the developer for that. The amendment tonight, number one, changing it to an omnibus district would remove the need to take lots out of the district just to enter into a credit enhancement agreement. An omnibus district like the one we have at our airport allows you to create new credit enhancement agreements as you go on through the life of the district without having to create a separate district for that. The downside is that we're a little bit late in the life of this district, so if there is a credit enhancement agreement that would extend beyond 2036, which is when it's now set to expire, we'd still have to do that again. But in any case, to me, it's the right way to do a downtown district, so I'm glad we eventually got there. We're obviously adding 10-year extension. That is one of the other important changes here, and that additional 10 years will help us get the value out of this district that we always expected. We are now capturing a significant value in this. It was just in the early years, as we were getting started, there was a flip-flop in value. If you can recall, back to 2008, 2009, it was a rough time. So that definitely played into it. We are also adding into this district some new allowed uses for captured TIF revenues, including utilizing funds for the creation and maintenance of public safety facilities, which I know is a topic we've already touched on a couple times tonight, the potential for new public safety facilities like these over here. Unfortunately, state law allows you to do that, but limits to only 15% of this district. So we are capped on how much we can utilize, but 15% is still a very nice drop in the bucket, I would suggest. So we're going to add that one to this. State law also allows you to utilize TIF funds for environmental remediation projects. We still have a mill district. We have a $5 million cleanup project and half a million dollars of new assessment funds to talk about, but this can also play a role in helping us remediate environmental concerns, whether it be buildings, whether it be the river, whether it be stormwater concerns, and a whole bunch, a whole host of other things that could fall into that. And lastly, another high priority topic that we've talked about tonight and at other meetings, affordable housing support and homelessness remediation. So we'll be able to utilize funds from the downtown district for those efforts as well. All of those things that I just mentioned, all three of them seem to be very high priority for the community at this time, so it's a very good time to change. Other than that, we're making absolutely no change to the map, to the lots that are currently in the district. That is the extent of the changes that have been proposed, and I'm glad to answer any questions that you have or that members of the public may have regarding this.
Well, this is a public hearing, and I probably should have explained that to the beginning, and what it is, is we don't participate in that. It's for the public. And so what I now do is, I ask, is there anybody else to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Okay, seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. And you will probably see that at some point in the future under new business or old business. That's usually what takes place.
I think it's on there tonight.
It is.
Yeah, I believe.
So you're stuck here.
I am stuck here. That's exactly correct.
All right. The next is a public hearing to receive public comments on the proposed changes to the City of Sanford ordinances pertaining to Article 2, Chapter 120 fees, Chapter 149, Sections 6.8 vacant building fees, Article 3, Section 226-28 digging permits, Article 2, Section 78 for impoundment fees, and to certain other municipal fees. All right, Steve, are you?
I'm going to pass this over to Ronnie Champlin, our Finance Director. Pursuant to the work that was done at this year's municipal budget and as approved by the City Council, the goal was to then go back to addressing these fees. Ronnie's worked with all of the department managers on that and has a summation of what the end product is, which is representative of what's in your packet here this evening.
Thank you. Take it away, Ronnie.
Good evening. As part of the budget process this year, as Steve said, an increase in certain fees were proposed for fiscal year '25 and approved by the City Council. In order to implement those fee increases, the relevant city ordinances and related procedural documents must be amended. The following fees were proposed to be increased by 10%, resulting in $158,000 increase in revenue projections. Digging permits, waste zero, waste transfer fees, waste transfer licenses, building permits, vacant buildings, license fees, cemetery interment, sale of lots, licenses and fees, animal control impoundment fees, animal control late fees, notary fees, outside job fees, recreation fees, and park fees. In your packet, as Steve mentioned, you'll find red lines of the relevant ordinances and a table outlining the proposed changes. The proposed changes to the City of Sanford ordinances are pertaining to Chapter 120 fees, Chapter 149 vacant building fees, Article 3, Section 22-26 digging permits, Article 2, Section 78-4 impoundment fees, and to certain other municipal fees. And the other municipal fees include Chapter 101, purchase and sale of lots, and annual perpetual care of lots. These fees are set by the Board of Trustees. Article 2, Patrol and Traffic Administration, this comes from the traffic detail and road closures, and park fees and recreation fees. As noted earlier, all the fees were adjusted by 10% and some minor adjustments for rounding, except for codes and planning. During the budget process, the recommendation again was to increase all codes and planning fees by the same 10%. And my departmental review with Jamie Cole, his recommendation was to make only two increases, which would in turn produce the same financial goal of the $61,000 for his department. So instead of increasing all fees for codes and planning, his recommendation was to just increase two. The two of them were building permits, he's recommending from $8 per thousand of work to $10 per thousand of work, and the vacant building licenses from 300 to 400 for each six-month license. Mr. Cole, as well as other department managers affected by fee increases, are in the audience or available online should you have further questions about specific fee changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. Moving on to the consent agenda, are there any questions from the council on the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. Under old business, in order to adopt proposed ordinance establishing a moratorium on the construction of campgrounds for 180 days pursuant to Title 30-A, subsection 4, 3, 5, 6, in order to allow time for examining the amendment of regulations pertaining to design standards that have potential and constitute a danger to public health and welfare. This item must be read on two separate occasions. This is the second reading. Maura?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the moratorium as was read last week. I'm willing to read it again if people would like. That's my motion.
A second? Thank you. Any discussion?
Weave the reading, please.
Pete?
So the one thing I have a problem, obviously, we need to do this, it's the timeframe, six months. We can't make a decision under six months. It's a campground, and it's for the entire, you know, Sanford-Springvale. I think that's a disservice to wait for everybody that has applications in for six months. So if you can, Maura, if you can help me understand this.
So it can be done in less time. That's allowed. But you have to remember, the planning board is going to receive, they're going to have a workshop, from what I understood, going to the planning board meeting the other night, where they're going to discuss the things that Jamie has red-flagged as a conversation item. After they do that, they're going to develop something and post it for public hearing. Once they've had the public hearing, they can vote on it, and then we have to post a public hearing for here, and then we have our public hearing and our two readings. So it's, it can be done in less time, as long as things move along smoothly. It will depend on where it gets, you know, where it gets held up, where the conversation goes, and how much, you know, how many issues develop, but it can be done in less than six months. This is not saying it will be six months. This is hopefully the maximum amount of time.
Thank you, because I had a lot of calls about the timeframe. They didn't understand, oh, Sanford is going to take forever. No, I needed to understand the timeframe so we could do this accordingly and get it right.
I don't think any of us want it to take longer than it needs to.
Right. And I just wanted that for the public to understand that we really do got to get this right. DEP rules on watershed, and we got the information there.
This is separate from DEP.
DEP is a completely separate application. We're looking at just a few items here, if I'm correct, Jamie.
Oh, okay.
DEP is a, they have to put in a whole application after our work is, the majority of our work is done.
Okay.
Anyone else? Jonathan?
Yeah, I'll just make a comment that, yeah, I think the 180 days is quite a long time, but, you know, I think we'll make every effort to make sure that we move this along as quickly as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie's been great. He's talked to the planning board. You talked to them Wednesday night about it, correct?
Yeah. So this should move right along. Any other comments? All those in favor? Thank you. In order to create a position of Assistant City Manager within the Administration Department pursuant to Chapter Section 205.3, and as a grade 17 within the wage classification system, and to be responsible for directing various citywide departmental activities and operations, assisting in providing administrative guidance to executive staff, and acting for the city manager in his or her absence, and performing all of the work as required. This must be read on two separate occasions. This is the second reading. May I have a motion to accept?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we create the position of Assistant Manager as read.
And a second, Anne?
I would second that.
All right, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you very much. In order to approve the amendment to Chapter 280 of the Sanford City Ordinance for a revision of Section 280-11-6 Urban Zone, this item must be read on two separate occasions. This is the second reading. May I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this repair.
May I have a second? Pete?
I'll second.
Any questions and discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much. In order to approve proposed ordinance revision to repeal and replace Chapter 265 Flood Plan Management corresponding with updated NFIP, and there's probably a way you say that, requirements and the new FEMA flood insurance rate map effective July 17, 2024. This requires two readings. This is the second reading. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the new flood maps.
May I have a second? Pete?
I'll second that.
And, hi, Jamie.
I just wanted to make note that there was a few very minor changes between first and second read. Aaron Moriarty had sent it in to the state for review. They found a couple typographical errors that have been corrected, so there have just been a few very minor changes, no substantive changes, just typographical.
Okay, so we don't have to have, that works. All right. And I want you to know, I did try to read the document. And I used the word "try." Yeah.
Dry, wasn't it?
It was very dry, and, yeah.
No pun intended.
No pun intended. So if that is your daily job, I'm so sorry.
That times about a million. Every one of the documents I have to read on an hourly basis is very similar.
Oh, my.
If you chose this.
All those in favor? Thank you. All right.
New business.
Under new business, here we go. In order to, oh, this is a biggie. In order to appoint Jamie Cole, Alex Hoare, Aaron Ledger, and Jenny, Jeanne Wood, as City of Sanford Code Enforcement Officers, and to appoint Jamie Cole as the local plumbing inspector, and Alice Hoare, and Aaron Ledger, and Jeanne, and hopefully I got her name right, Jeanne Wood, as alternate plumbing inspectors for the period beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025. May I have a motion, please? Anne?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointments.
May I have a second, please? Jonathan? And any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much. In order to appoint Aaron Ledger and Jeanne Wood as constables, by the way, you can't carry a gun, for the period beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025, be it further ordered that this appointment is empowered to enforce civil violations of the city code, including the amendments made, and any emergency ordinances that are approved and adopted by the City Council Order, and is empowered to serve civil summons for the violations of said city code. Be it further ordered that the appointment is not allowed to carry a firearm concealed or unconcealed in the performance of duties or to make arrests. May I have a motion, please?
I'm moved to approve the appointments.
Thank you. May I have a second, please? Pete?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Anne?
I just want to know if they get like a little gold star, you know, like.
No, nothing.
Can we put that in the budget for next year, Steve? Like some kind of shield?
Something, okay.
Maybe some bear spray, Madam Mayor. They can't use firearms. We get you guys bear spray.
It can be green. It doesn't have to be any police or fire connection whatsoever.
Yeah. All right. All those in favor? Thank you. The next, in order to authorize the acceptance of 2024 Community Enterprise CDBG, I'll never get those right, grant, in the amount of $100,000 to improve commercial facades in the downtown. May I have a motion, please? Anne?
Madam Mayor, I would like to authorize the acceptance of the grant.
Thank you. Could we have a second? Jonathan?
I'll second.
Thank you. And any questions? And any questions, comments, concerns?
All, I only wanna say that Community Development Block Grant, grant, bugs me every time. Because I know what CDBG stands for.
Mm-hmm. You're right. Grammar is poor.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor? Thank you.
Ooh, that's why Allison's here.
In order to approve, authorize of the city manager, just one more thing first, then you. In order to approve...
Oh, that's her, Town of Freiburg, FAA.
Ah, okay. To authorize the city manager to sign the cooperative agreement between the Town of Freiburg and the City of Sanford to transfer 300,000 of FAA entitlement funds, be transferred back and repaid to the City of Sanford in the year 2025 and 2026. And is this what we did last year, too?
Nope.
This is different. Okay, go ahead.
Yep. I'm Allison Navia. I'm the Airport Manager of our Sanford Seacoast Regional Airport. A quick overview of FAA funding and how that works. So FAA is the Federal Aviation Administration, and they have this program called the Airport Improvement Program. So it's a huge trust fund where all this money from the entire, entire country goes into this trust fund, and it's dedicated to funding all the capital improvements at all the public airports. So when you buy a ticket and you have that little fee that's on there, those all go into this trust fund. So it's one of the very few systems, if you don't use it, you don't pay for it. So this AIP money, it's apportioned in different ways based on the size and complexity of your airport. So airports that don't have commercial service, like Sanford and like Freiburg, we get a certain amount that they call entitlement money. So every year, we get $150,000 of entitlement money that goes into our little fund. You can roll over up to four years of it, which is $600,000. And if you don't use it, it expires and you lose it. So, for instance, one of the projects that we just did this year was the seal coating project that we just did. So these are the grants that I come to you over and over again for that airport improvement project, uh, program. So what they let you do that will restart the clock for you on your money and helps out in between airports is they let you borrow in between airports. Because unfortunately, $600,000 doesn't get you projects anymore like it used to. So years ago, we did one where we borrowed money from Eastport to be able to do the airport administration building. And then in those years, when you get 150 back, then you pay them back, and it goes back into their bank, and it restarts the clock for them, so it doesn't expire. So I had said at that time, and that's what I mentioned in here, where I said, now it's our turn to kind of pay it forward. So now Freiburg is in need of money. We don't have any big projects in the next couple of years. So we can loan them our money, and then they'll pay it back. This agreement that we have before you tonight is the mechanism by which it ensures that that transaction is gonna take place. Not taking a handshake agreement, so that they'll send it back, because otherwise, they wouldn't be under any obligation to do that. So that's, uh, that's what it is for, for this one. So we would get paid back. Instead of waiting till 2026, I'm gonna ask that they transfer 150 each year. So if we do come up with a project that we wanna do in the meantime, we're not waiting till 2026 to get the 300 back. And just in case they come up with something else they wanna spend it on, we have to get our money back first before they can do that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? And may I have a motion, then? Jonathan?
Motion to approve this cooperative agreement.
All right, a second, please? Pete?
I second that. Thank you.
All those in favor? Thank you. Don't go away. In order to approve and authorize the city manager to sign a contract to perform the services for payment marking at the Auburn-Louisson Airport in the amount of $28,292.44.
We are planning to take our show on the road once again. So this is part of the agreement where I asked if we could buy a new paint machine, if an opportunity came up where we could use it elsewhere to have it pay for itself, that we would do so. So this is the second time that we're doing this. The first time was at Freiburg, and that was just a very small one. That was less than like $4,000. This is a much bigger one. We're not doing any of their runways. We're just doing taxiways in all of their apron and parking stalls and the lead-in lines onto the runway. So we did the pricing. We used our fully burden rate for it, and we're still extremely competitive against even the next lowest bid that they could possibly get for it. So it worked out, it worked out really well. So it's a win-win where we get to pay, this will pay, not only so that that paint machine that we bought will be 100% paid for from work that we've done, but it also paid for us to paint our own runway, and it reimburses for all of the work that goes into it as far as the hourly rate. So if we wanted to, the way that I set it up, we could do it so that one of the days could be a Friday, and then the guys are able to get a little bit of overtime. But Lewis pays for, for that difference. So they get something out of it, too, besides just the, you know, the great pride of painting multiple airports around the state. Lewis did approve this, so what's in the packet? They've already signed the proposal. They signed the agreement. And we have all the certificates of insurance in hand.
Thank you, Allison. May I have a motion to accept, please? Ann?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept.
A second?
I'll second.
Any questions?
I just had more of a comment. I like that included in the packet, or in the explanation of the, well, first of all, it's a great program. I appreciate that you made the effort to go make it happen. But secondly, I like that we're recognizing that the revenue from that project will stay within the airport, either CIP or under other appropriate expenditures. I sometimes feel like when we approve additional revenue or grants, that they, it gets fuzzy as to what department that need to receive those grants actually receives them, if that makes sense. You know, it, it lands in the, on the book, so to speak, but sometimes I don't feel like it stays within the department that actually created that revenue, per se. So I just am commenting that I liked the explanation of how that was gonna happen, so thank you.
I promise I will always do that for the airport.
Well, federal regulations mandates that, so...
We're just being good boys and girls.
We can't, so we'll get our hands left.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. In order to approve the Sixth Amendment to the Sanford Downtown Municipal Development and Taxing and Financing District to establish the downtown district as an omnibus and, uh, to allow the city to enter into future credit enhancement agreements with individual commercial property owners within the district, and add additional project costs, and extend the term for the district to 30 years. Could I have a motion, please? Pete?
A motion to approve this.
Thank you. A second, Ann?
And I would second that.
Any questions? All right, all those in favor? Thank you. See, Keith, you didn't have to come back up. Perfect. All right, in order to appoint a steering committee for the Sanford Comprehensive Plan as presented, and we did state that we weren't gonna have family members, more than one family member, and I think there's a family member on here.
We stated from, not from one household, was the stipulation.
Right. It's a similar business, similar, similar interest, so that's why we were trying to...
We, as a council, we were trying to avoid that, too. So, um, who, who are they?
So we have, for instance, we had Bonnie and Mike Patterson both apply. We kept Bonnie on, took Mike off. And I just noticed we had both Jack McAdam and Matt McAdam, both, uh, both essentially representing McDougal Orchards, even though Jack is coming from the planning board direction. So, I mean, it's obviously a council decision, but we were trying, we were trying to avoid that. There's so many people on the planning commission. It's voting membership, obviously, as opposed to people who can still attend and, and kind of be part of it, so.
So then I'm going to ask the council what they want to do about that before we, then I'll turn it over to Aaron.
So, um, I got the last part of this. So you've got people on here, we need to make a choice between a couple of different people. Is that what you're doing?
We were gonna let everybody do it and then just take off family pairs. That's, that's what we were talking about. If you wanted to do the comp plan, great. But we tried to take off family pairs, because we thought one was representative enough for that particular interest group, so.
And that's been done?
Well, for Mike and Bonnie Patterson, that's been done. Bonnie is going to be on it. So, uh, Maura just noticed that they were...
Yeah, Jack and his brother.
Jack and his son. So Jack was, and I didn't notice because Jack was coming from the planning board direction, and Matt was...
No one spoke to him to see if one would back off and the other one would stay, no?
She just noticed it.
I just noticed it, because they're coming from two different spots. It's a council decision, um, in the end. I just wanted to point it out.
Well, it, just while I'm talking, I guess I would support Jack. I mean, we all, probably all of us know Jack. Uh, he's been on, uh, kind of a loyal, uh, person on the planning board for us. Done a lot of work with the city. I would support him for those reasons.
Oh, I would just let them choose.
Ann?
Okay, I thought, I thought that's what you were asking. You said we had to make a choice.
We were just saying, um, our choice, our, what we're choosing is, do we want to allow the two family members, even though they're not living in the same house? Where we didn't allow both Bonnie and Mike, even though they live in the same... So the question is, are we, um, do we wanna do that with this family also? And then they can decide. That's what Maura's saying. Who wants the other?
Just one from each family.
Ann?
And is it, for clarification, are Bonnie and Mike husband and wife?
Yes.
Okay. So a, a couple of just comments, and maybe some direction from Steve or Aaron from, from my standpoint. We're a small community. I'm related to a lot of people here, you'd never guess, as are a lot of us, I think. So I guess we just have to be cognizant of the definition of related, you know, family members when it comes to things like this, because we're, again, a small community from that standpoint. The other thing that I would say is that as somebody who wears a lot of hats in my community, it is sometimes hard. It seems that me, to me, that Jack is showing up as a planning board member, not as a representative of agriculture, or the farm, or his family farm. So they're kind of representing different aspects of, um, you know, he, he chose as planning board member to be there, whereas Matt is there as representative of a small business owner, I believe. And I hate to lose, honestly, either of their input. I think Matt, as a young person, recently returned to the community, and a third generation of a family business is really important. And I feel like Jack's voice is also really important. So I'm, I'm struggling with which way to go on, I guess.
That's why we're asking.
Yeah, yeah.
Pete?
We would have to add back both Pattisons if we did that. So I would have to say one family...
Well, the Pattisons live in the same household.
Correct, but it's still same families we're talking about, same community. We are a small community. Should be, if we're following suit to avoid any problems. I'm sure both of them would, would come up to see which one would be better to represent their family in the planning. So I would, I would have to say, even though we're a small community, we follow suit what we already started, and then there's no, no problems. That's my take.
Any other comments from the council?
So just to clarify what you're saying, same household, immediate family?
Yeah.
Okay.
You would get two-for-one votes sometime, and I'm not accusing anybody of that, but we, this would potentially run in, so.
Yeah, I could, I could see that being potentially an issue. I think, I think it makes sense to not have immediate family members as part of the same group. Just because you're, yeah, you're kind of doubling up the vote, potentially. So I think I would support that.
And, and I would like to point out that if any of my children were on this and I was on it, it would not be the same vote, because we would probably disagree. Just that, that is a possibility. I'm gonna go to Aaron, and what is your...
This is the political piece. You don't have to weigh in on it. No, that's okay. I don't mind. Well, the first thing I would clarify is that there's actually no vote. So it's not like we'd have a hung court or something, kind of, it's, it's a conversation. It's a process that we're going through. The other point, right, Jack is there to represent the planning board, and I will say that he and Matt are from two different generations. And so we were looking, I was looking forward to having someone there from the younger demographic, being my own demographic, really, but from the public. We have very few people, very few people, I would say, that are interested in participating in public commentary and, and public planning processes that are not available for ARP.
I gotta tell you, I can't imagine why not.
One of the things that was the most disturbing for me, and I don't know if...
Lower the years.
I'm gonna ask Aaron.
Hold one moment. Go ahead.
Oh, okay, so Aaron, my, my comment on this was, do you think you have enough representation from the urban of Sanford? Because there's a lot of farm representation here. And that concerns me, because for smart growth, there needs to be some people who understand urban and how urban can be good and can protect the rural.
So my hope is that the farmers that are represented here would like to preserve their rural nature and understand that the best way to preserve rural areas is to promote growth in the established urban areas. I do think we have a higher percentage of farmers on the, from the community, because Jack was so vocal. He was one of the planning board members that really took it to heart to try and go and recruit people to, to serve on the planning board. And, um, so that's where the biggest response came from. This was posted twice as an advertisement in Sanford-Springville News and once as a press release. We mentioned it at several planning board meetings. It's been sort of brought up here several times. And essentially, this is everyone that responded. So it wasn't an enormous turnout, and I know that there's 28 people now represented. But I think, as was discussed at the pre-agenda meeting for today, there is a good amount of attrition that happens over the course of a year. People may not be available for every meeting. It's a year-long process. There will be conflicts. There will be vacations. So it doesn't seem to me like there's too many people on this board. And I did think that they were of a different, enough household/generation for that particular family, that it would be a different viewpoint.
Okay. And I would have to agree with you with that one.
I'm gonna point out that this is an open process. Your meetings are public. So if people choose to come and, at any point along the way when you're discussing various areas, that's a good thing for you.
It is. They aren't public hearings, so there's not necessarily public participation at every steering committee meeting. There will be specific public engagement events and, and meetings that, that we will be looking to hear from the broad public.
You can't picture people beating down the door to get into these meetings?
They're welcome to come and sit. That's fine. Door's open.
Okay, so let's, Jonathan, go ahead.
So, um, given that this is more just an input group, and they're not actually outputting decisions necessarily, I think I'd be okay with keeping the, was it a father and son?
Father-son, yeah.
Situation in there. And then as far as the husband-wife team, I mean, it's, I mean, you'll probably get a lot of similar feedback from them, but I guess at that point, I don't think it's really a problem. So maybe it's just best to just leave it alone, let whoever wants to be in there.
And I think Mike was taken off this list, so we're saying putting him back on, too. Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's the right way to go. If we put, put them back on, we get no feedback, no favoritisms. And Jack, you come from a good family. We're not beating you up here. We're just trying to get this right.
No, no, I just, I did, it was partially because we had taken Mr. Patterson off that I raised the conversation, so.
She wanted to just be fair. Okay.
Good? Any other comments about the gang?
So do we need to vote on this, or you're just presenting this?
No, we are voting to...
Okay, so can I have a, a motion to accept the...
And add Mr. Patterson.
And add Mr. Patterson back in. Jonathan?
A motion to accept and add the previously removed people back in.
Okay. And Nate?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
And, and do we get badges or something, Erin, for this?
We're getting t-shirts made. Don't worry.
Oh, perfect, perfect.[1744.88] She's teasing me.
In order to accept a proposal from, oh, what?
Oh, well, I'm, I'm just sitting here, employee training around, you know, highly chronologically qualified people, such as myself, right? Just felt a little sting here tonight, so we'll, we'll, we'll address that.
And, and I am not part of the AARP yet, just so you know. I have a lot of gray, but.
And I am. Okay. In order to accept a proposal from Wright Pierce Engineering to inspect good old dam and seal gates and aqueducts. And is Matt on? Here we go, Matt. Go ahead.
Good evening. So in a continuing effort to button up issues in preparation for the Raze Grant reconstruction project downtown, we've identified that there's some older infrastructure particularly associated with the number-one pond dam, the intersection of River Street, High Street, and Washington Street, and running up High Street and towards the mill areas. Unfortunately, much of that infrastructure is, is outside of living memory. We don't have good records of it. What records we do have are mostly hand-drawn, not to scale, and they certainly need to be identified using modern techniques before we set upon them with full reconstruction efforts. This is not only to mitigate the city's risk, but also mitigate the, the state's risk when they come in and, and start reconstruction activities downtown. So we reached out to our consultant, with which we had a pre-standing services agreement. They developed a proposal to do an investigation with a dive team and/or remote cameras, identify exactly what infrastructure we've got, then start making recommendations on how we go about securing that infrastructure so that we don't have a catastrophic incident in the years to come when we're, we're working on top of this infrastructure or, or digging unfortunately through it, if, if it's not identified. So what you have tonight before you is a proposal for Wright Pierce to perform that work, make recommendations on corrective measures, and then also develop cost estimates associated with those corrective measures so the city can make an informed decision on how properly to abandon or remove said buried infrastructure.
Make a motion to approve and just remind everybody, I don't know how many years ago it was, at least 10, maybe more, diver working for the city was killed up in Emory Mills, in the dam up there. So I think this is really important work that we get done, so we don't, as Matt said, we don't have any injuries and we're able to prevent accidents as we move into the future.
Thank you. Ann?
And I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. All those in favor? Oh, Jonathan, wait, Jonathan had a question.
Just a quick question. You mentioned removal. Are we planning on looking at removing some of the dams? Is that, is that correct, or just assessing?
No, just, really just sealing the dam, but the, the downstream of the dam are, are aqueducts, essentially like large pipes carrying water, previously intended for use in the mills that are no longer in use, but are currently in some state of empty, full, or under pressure.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So we have a first and a second.
You know, there's, there's, there's no as-bilts for these. There's no historical knowledge, but there's no as-bilts for these. We don't know physical locations, so they want to look at those at the source, be able to cap that off at the source. So if and when a pipe should get hit during the reconstruction of High Street or other areas under the Raze Grant, we don't have a massive flood, which we nearly had. A very quick action, address that. So thank you very much, Director Hill. To give you a case in point, when, when the EPA was doing the Superfund site in my hometown, they excavated a large area and they came across a three, 100-year-old, three-sided granite drainage system. Two pieces of granite upright, piece of granite on the top, dry in the trench. They came to the city office, the town office, and they said, "Do you have as-bilts for this?" "You gotta be kidding me, right?" "No, we don't have any as-bilts on a 100-year-old, you know, granite drainage system." "Well, it must not be functional." "We got a massive rainstorm and their equipment trailers, tools, and everything else was flooded over, and they lost them all." "So there's old systems out there and they're still working. We need to find out where they are and address them before we strike them, so..." Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
In order to accept a bid from an AStO landscaping architects for the amount not to exceed $20,225 for the design of Carpenter Park, help with preparation of documentation for a construction bid and construction oversight. Brady, take it away.
Good evening, everybody. After much communication with many different companies and landscape architects, we only received two bids on this project from AStO and CHA. AStO is the low bidder at $15,225 compared to CHA at $70,000. The city has worked with AStO over the last few years, and we've built a good working relationship. And at Property Subcommittee on May 14th, Manager Buck indicated the cost for construction oversight are not included in this $15,000 range, but would be built separately at $90 an hour. So our total anticipated cost for AStO's services for construction administration and design would be around $20,225. This is part of an LWCF grant that was started years ago, and we are just hopeful to get this project up and going as quickly as possible so that we can have this, have this park be part of our community and ready for the residents.
Thank you. And Pete, this is kind of addressing one of the concerns you had earlier. So can I have a motion, please?
I'll motion to move this forward.
Bob, second?
Second.
All those, oh, any other questions? Jonathan?
Yeah, so this is just to architectural services?
Yes.
And what, this is the splash pad and all that that we were talking about a couple of years ago?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
All those in favor? Thank you. All right. In order to approve, pose changes to the City of Sanford ordinance pertaining to Article 2, Chapter 120 fees, Chapter 149, Section 6.8 vacant building fees, Article 3, Section 226-28, digging permits, Article 2, Subsection 78-4 impoundment fees, and to certain other principal fees. This must be read on two separate occasions. This is the first reading. All right, do we have any questions? Okay, so we'll move right along. Resolve to appoint City Manager Steve Buck as Sanford's representative on the Maine Municipal Association MMA Legislative Policy Committee for July 2024 to June 2026, with the mayor of Sanford designated as his alternative. Steve, do you want to make a comment on this?
Yes, so pursuant to this process, as, because of the size of the City of Sanford inside of Senatorial District 33, the way the LPC works, there's two representatives from each of the senate districts that are appointed and/or elected towards the LPC, so 70 members on the Legislative Policy Committee for Maine Municipal Association. So the city gets to award, gets to appoint one person, one of those two positions because of our size. The other position will be run competitively. People can, elected officials or appointed officials can put their name in and submit that. The city council supports that. That name can go forward. And then the, the communities in our, in our district would have the opportunity to vote on whomever puts forward in that process. Over the last legislative cycle, city appointed me to the LPC. Community Development Director Ian Howssill Rain for the position was elected, so we really had a good footing in there on the LPC. I don't know what that's gonna look like in this cycle, who, who's going to put in for those, that second position or not, assuming that you appoint me to the position. I would ask for that appointment. I have served for over 25 years on the LPC from various communities that I've been in. I'm passionate about that work with the Legislative Policy Committee because I know that, excuse me, from a budgetary perspective, some of the greatest inroads that we can make is at the legislative, at the state level. For example, state revenue sharing. We're already working with the school department to ensure that I can voice the important parts of the, the proposed amendments under EPS, especially for the disadvantaged students, who will make the greatest difference for us in our formulation as far as continued student support here in Sanford. Our mayor has, continues to work with the mayor's coalition. I bring those elements forward as well. I have had a significant number of pieces of legislation sponsored over the years. The LPC will sponsor that as part of the, the program. They will get the sponsors lined up, move that forward. And I find that at this juncture in my career, I am one of the senior voices there at the, at the LPC, so I have a great deal of influence over what that record looks like. The LPC will, will start its work here after July, establishing what the legislative format will be for the LPC going forward into the long sessions, such that we can line up legislation that needs to be sponsored and/or take our stances based upon what happened in the last two sessions and what we anticipate coming forward. I'm going to advocate for a stronger approach than what I have in the last couple of years. I've acquiesced to the softer approach that has not produced strong results for us. It tends to get lost in the fracas of the, our call, the, the two large caucuses, the Rs and the Ds. They fight amongst themselves and they don't pay attention to what our local needs are. Pete, you're nodding your head. You, you, right, you, you know of what I'm speaking. So the polite approach has, has not produced significant results over the last several legislative sessions, so. We're in a better position now. Revenue sharing has not been under attack as of late. They've done some, the tax, senior tax stabilization program crashed and burned in a single, in a single year, so we're watching those kind of efforts. To continue, I take a lead role. I am a longtime advocate for preservation of home rule authority here in our, in the state of Maine. That is constantly under attack at the legislative session. And by propagating that strong stance on that, the LPC, I have noted over the years, now calls out anything, anything that touches the erosion of home rule. It's just a specific stance against, so. I would appreciate your appointment for this position, and I would encourage you to talk with others here in the communities of Sanford, Waterboro, Alfred, and Lebanon, to get another strong voice in there, because it's very critical work to be done. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, Ann?
And I'll second that.
Any other comments?
Yeah, thank you for doing that, Steve. I don't know the timeframe for the second one, but if we can talk later, I might consider it as well. Okay.
Jonathan?
I just want to say thank you for being willing to run, and I'm more than happy to have you involved in that process, representing Sanford, so, thank you.
All those in favor? Thank you. Okay. Ann, did you have anything you wanted to add to the agenda? Or do you want to put something on next agenda?
Can I make a motion to add to the agenda at this point? I'd like to make a motion to add discussion about the annual flying of the pride flag that we've done for the last two years to the agenda, if I may.
Thank you.
Do you want me to explain it?
All those in favor of adding this to the agenda? Is that what we did?
You have a motion, I'll second it.
Okay.
Adding it to the agenda.
Yeah, good. All those now, oh, any discussion on that, and then we'll do, yes?
Yeah, I think this has come up the last few years, and it's always been kind of controversial, so I, I don't think it's appropriate for us to be flying that flag here in Sanford. If you want to fly that on your own personal property, that's fine, but I don't think that it necessarily...
Wait a second, right now, we're just talking about adding it to the agenda. So that's a discuss, and then save your discussion, because then we will do it.
All right, I'll save my comment.
Okay. Anyone else about a discussion on adding it to the agenda? Okay, so all those in favor?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Sorry, I just have one quick question. The last time we discussed this, this was brought to us by the high school students?
No, it has to be by a counselor, by our amendments.
I, I understand, but, but it seems to me there was a year ago, was it the high school students, two years ago? High school students brought a flag?
Yes.
Asked us to post a flag. We weren't, we weren't able to do that for the amount of time they wanted to, but we did have it on in front of city hall for a week. Is that, is that right? And this is the same thing, this is essentially being initiated by the high school students. This is essentially being initiated by the high school students.
No, this is being initiated by Council Hansman, because June is almost here. So she wanted to add to the agenda.
So all those in favor of adding it to the agenda for us to discuss? All right, all those opposed? All right.
So it's not unanimous?
Doesn't have to be.
Doesn't have to be.
Doesn't have to be.
All right, so this has now been added to the agenda. So, Ann, would you state what this should?
Thank you, Mayor. And the reason it wasn't previously on the agenda for further preparation is that I frankly lost track of time. I cannot believe that June is here. But it is something that the majority of the council has supported the last couple of years, and it did come forward, I think, from youth in our community originally. And that first year, it did come late, and so it was only able to be up for a short period of time. June is considered, you know, Pride Month, and a lot of our surrounding communities and communities throughout Maine opt into flying the pride flag during this time in recognition of, you know, that we have diverse communities and that we're a welcome and opening community, which I personally hope Sanford is, and I think it's just really about saying that. I know there's been concern expressed about a multitude of groups saying, "Hey, can you fly our flag?" and so forth. We have processes and a policy in place to have that route through the council. I don't believe any other, I don't believe it's come up in any other fashion.
Well, this is a flag that's approved by the state. So you can only do those flags anyway. So it's not just any old flag that you can put on there, and this is one of them that is approved. All right, so. So...
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the flying of the pride flag for the month of June in the City of Sanford.
Okay, thank you. We need a second?
Second.
All right, now, any other discussion? Now, Jonathan?
All right, so I'll reiterate that I don't think it's appropriate, regardless of what the state says or what other cities or towns are doing. I find it offensive personally and against my religion, so I oppose this. I probably am in a minority here, but I just wanted to state that. And, you know, this has come up at least the last two or three years, and I've basically been saying the same thing. So I'll probably get outvoted, but I certainly oppose flying a non-state or federal flag when it comes to something in front of the city buildings. Thank you.
Pete?
So this is approved by the state, is this flag, is that what we're talking about?
There are certain flags that are approved that you can fly.
Okay, that's where I was stuck, because if it wasn't approved, it would be a no, just simply because it wasn't approved.
We tried to kind of put restrictions.
Oh, wait a second. Steve?
Somebody can correct me if I'm, there's, this is, there's, there is no state approval as an approved flag to be flown.
At our meeting earlier, you brought that up and, and said it was.
No, no. So the city council passed a resolution a few years back. So I did do a, a lot of research on this topic. There was a Supreme Court with the United States decision on this that absent a policy by the city, the flags were free space for anybody to fly any flag on there at all, and you couldn't, you couldn't correct or govern that. So once that was recognized, the city council did put a resolution in place. Ben, if you could pull that up on the screen, I've, I've just retrieved this. So this contains all of the, the information in here as, as to the regulations around it. So it states, "Whereas the city council desires to establish clear guidelines regarding the display of all flags flown on city-owned or city-maintained properties," and this was reviewed by our legal counsel to ensure that it was in compliance. "Whereas in adopting this resolution, the city council declares that flag poles owned or maintained by the City of Sanford are not intended to serve as a forum for free expression by the public, or rather as a non-public forum for the display of any governmental and non-governmental flag authorized by the city council, either required by law or as an expression of the city council's official government speech." That's the critical part, right? So by having the policy, you can limit it to the display of, of government flags and/or official city council's government speech. So now, therefore be it resolved by the city, Sanford City Council, that Section 1, "Flags shall be displayed in accordance with the federal and state statutes and regulations, including but not limited to United States Code Title IV, Chapter 1, and Title I, MRSA, Chapter 9, subsections... Nine, Subsections, uh, Two Zero Six, Two Zero Six Dash A, Two Five Two Dash A at all." Uh, so that goes into the order of the flags that are flown on, on the pole and, and the, and the how. "Section Two, the city, uh, shall fly the United States' flag at all city facilities having a pole. If equipped and capable, the city shall fly the United States' flag, the POW MIA flag below, and then the state of Maine flag. Flags may be flown at half-staff only at such times as specified by the President of the United States or the governor of the state of Maine, and may be authorized by the governor for only the city upon request." "Section Three, commemorative flag. One, as a, as an expression of the city's official government speech, the city council may authorize the display of a commemorative flag to fly at city-owned or city-maintained properties. Two, the city council shall only consider a request to display a commemorative flag if the request is made by a member of the city council. Requests to fly a commemorative flag by members of the public will not be considered. Three, the decision to approve or deny a request to display a commemorative flag shall be made at a publicly noticed council meeting. Four, commemorative flags shall be displayed for a period of time that is reasonable or customary for the subject, uh, that is to be commemorated, typically seven days, but not more than thirty days. Commemorative flags must be either purchased by the city or temporarily donated for the city's use and must be clean, without holes and tears, be made of a w- uh, all-weather fabric. Commemorative flags must be the same size or smaller than the United States' flag. If any other flag is flown at half-staff, the commemorative flag will always be flown at half-staff. A commemorative, commemorative flag, as defined in this policy, shall mean a flag that identifies with a specific historical event, cause, nation, or group of people that the city council chooses to honor or commemorate consistent with the city's mission and priorities. The following are not allowed as commemorative flags and will not be considered by the city council. A, flags of a particular religious movement or creed to avoid the appearance of city government endorsing religion, or a particular religious movement or creed pursuant to the Establishment Clause. B, flags of a political party, uh, to avoid the appearance of city, uh, government endorsing a political party, and flags advocating a certain outcome in an election." "Section Four, this resolution is effective immediately on passage, and that was the fifth day of July, uh, Twenty Twenty Two."
Thank you, Steve, for bringing that to our attention. So, does that make it clear?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Any other comments? Okay, so we have a first and a second. So, all those in flavor, uh, flavor, in fa- in favor of flying, um, the pride flag? And all those against? Thank you. All right, so that passes. Good, thank you. Um, any other, uh, councilor comments? Pete?
Right now, go Celtics. They're, they're up, uh, they were fourteen to nothing the last time I checked, so, that's where I'm at.
Are we, it's just the beginning, right?
Yeah.
You'll be home shortly.
Ann?
Uh, a couple of quick comments. Um, one, our community had the most amazing event this past Saturday. The Backpack Program had its chocolate benefit spectacular, um, because of primarily small business support and sponsorships, um, as well as attendees who were very generous with raffle and silent auctions. Uh, we raised enough funds to cover thirty thousand meals for Sanford students and their families, which is just really, really great. Um, so that, thank you to all the folks who were part of that and helped make it happen. There were a lot of volunteers. Um, the other is that this Thursday, a very proud both mom moment and also just, um, Sanford alumni moment, the SRTC, uh, program will have their annual kind of graduation or award ceremony on Thursday, which is just exciting, and my kiddo is graduating from the cosmetology program, which I'm very proud of. And the last thing is a little bit, um, perhaps random, and I'm adding to your to-do list, Mayor, but I recently learned that the rural residential loans, um, that have been really important in allowing fairly, or really low-income community members here in Sanford to accomplish mortgages, um, to own properties, and we've discussed, and we look at developments like, um, uh, the Nassau redevelopment, that homeownership, uh, amongst rentals is really important in, in communities and neighborhoods, and so that rural residential loan program allowed low-income folks to access, and I say low-income, income, like sixty, seventy thousand even and lower, um, access mortgages, and that program wasn't funded recently, um, through our, um, administration. And I don't know if other communities, uh, and mayors realize that that happened, or there could be any conversation at the, um, mayor's coalition about putting something forward to our federal, um, to Congress basically and saying, gosh, why wasn't it funded? Um, and is there anything that we can do? It's really impactful to communities like ours.
Is that federal or state?
Is it the one through the Department of Ag?
Federal.
It's the one through the Department of Ag.
I believe so. I'm looking at Diane, she knows, but it's, I believe so. Uh, but it's a, it was federal funding that, um, in shock to many folks, it was just not funded. Um, and that's it.
Jonathan, did you have anything?
Um, yeah, I just had a quick question. I had someone reach out to me about the Oakdale Cemetery, and usually they get flags, um, for Memorial Day.
They're planning, I think it was Saturday for Oakdale.
Okay, so those will be, uh-
It's, they're, they do a schedule, and so they were cleaning up still this weekend, and I remember talking to someone as part of the cleanup, and so the veterans usually do it, and they set, each cemetery has like a time and day, and-
Okay.
I'm pretty sure they're planning to.
This person that reached out thought they should have been there by then, so-
I agree, I agree. They don't have as many flags as Saint Ignatius. The French people flock. I'm just teasing.
Yeah, just to follow up on your, your comment of the, uh, Madam Mayor of the, uh, road signs along the road. Uh, if you go down, uh, you, you can make a game out of this, as I know you were kind of doing. If you go down, I think it's School Street, past the DPW office, if I got the right place. I've lived in Sanford for forty years, but, uh, if you go by there, just past the, uh, the veterans' place, uh, there's a, there's a sign there. It's a temporary, it's been there, but if you can go slow enough and hit it just right, you'll get a smiley face.
Yes.
It's the only one I've ever seen that showed a smiley face.
Sometimes on my bicycle, sometimes on my bicycle, I actually try to see if I can break the speed limit.
There is, there's one in-
I never have done it.
There is one in Kennebunk, that going over ninety-nine and over that way.
Oh, yeah, they give you compliments.
Yes, they say, "Good job," or thumbs up, or yeah.
You have to just imagine all the kids in the backseat saying, "Come on, get a smiley face, slow down, you know what I'm telling you? There's a lot to it."
You can tell, it doesn't take much to humor me. All right, any, any other comments? Okay, does anyone have any other, more? Is that a hand?
Future agenda items.
Oh, future, let me say it first.
I'm waiting.
Future, future agenda items.
So, is there any way we can register panhandlers? Because we know that-
Doing, getting an income.
Well, the problem is their signs often are, um, misleading, not true. I, I actually talked to a tenant, very sweet woman who had stopped and given money, and, and the police were there for, at her apartment for some problems on the internet, and they informed her that, well, that didn't go to the sandwich she thought they could get at McDonald's, that, you know, it went into supply some drugs, and she was just shocked and, um, because, you know, it's, she feels bad, and I told her, I said, "No, the officers are correct." I said, "It's, it's a job," and, I don't know, it just, it would be nice to require registration to some degree. I don't know. Something where, because I, you know, some of them actually are scary, like the way they look at you when you're driving, and-
I think Portland tried to do something about it and was, came under freedom of speech, so they couldn't-
I'm not saying they can't do it. I'm saying they have to be registered to do it.
Mm-hmm. Nate, any opinion on that?
Uh-
John Smith, do you think there are some?
I mean, I guess, I guess the question then becomes, does requiring someone to register to panhandle, is that going to be a limitation on free speech as well? So-
Well, they, well, they're standing on a city corner is what I'm, you know, they're like in traffic.
Sure.
You know, they'd have to be-
But if they're homeless, they might not have IDs.
Well, I, I mean, there are, I think, a slew of issues that potentially run into on that. I think it's, I mean, there can be potentially explored, but I don't think it's going to get what you're looking for.
We, we've tackled this topic a number of times.
Yeah, I know.
Number of times. Uh, Portland really did a Herculean effort to get miserably defeated on it and, and just had to leave, leave it be. It i- it is a matter of free speech on public property, so that, that's, that's an issue. We have safety concerns. I talk to the chief about that on a regular basis, the safety concerns. Uh, I will point out there's false advertising. I think of a, a person that stands there and says, "Homeless need help," right?
They're not.
Not, not true, right? Not going to do it.
So, maybe we could have some sort of a campaign to let people know?
Well, I think when we made the comment, and Steve also made the comment, that people need to stop giving clothing, bringing down food to certain areas, and then they would come and, and to the facilities that do it, and if people would give to the agencies that are really truly helping and would know that this person isn't just going to spend it on drugs, um, it would probably be a little more beneficial. And then people wouldn't panhandle. Jonathan?
Um, so, I think we all know individual we're probably talking about, at least-
There's several now.
I know there's, there's been other places, but, um, yeah, I don't know if this, this particular individual is living on the streets, but a lot of the panhandlers, they've got cars somewhere. You look at their shoes, they're, they look like they've showered recently. They're probably not actually homeless, so, um, yeah, unfortunately, people help support their, um, well, habit and, uh, you know, deceiving of people. Um, but, yeah, I think maybe, you know, some information campaigns so people can, you know, have some more information about how, how it works, why people do it, and, you know, some of the-
Save your money.
Some of the aspects around that.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do, they do make money.
Nate?
Well, this just goes back to what we were talking about in our Homeless Task Force update about how we have, there's a concerted effort to help people who are in need, and so panhandling is very similar to that, where you're going sort of outside of that system to contribute. So, maybe there is, you know, like, you know, just pu- maybe pushing that concerted effort of a, you know, like, we were just saying, uh, Council of Montel was just saying about an information campaign, but it's geared towards those centralized resources to help those in need.
Yeah, absolutely. Bob?
Yeah, I just want to repitulate what, uh, what you mentioned, Madam Mayor. But the bottom line is, if you, if you don't give them any money, then if they're not making any money, then they're going to go away and find someplace where they can make money. So, say, but I think Pete said it, save, save your money, you know, and, and if you don't like them in the community, don't, don't give them money. Um, and they'll go away on their own. I think that's probably the, uh, the only solution.
I used to say that on Facebook when I was part of the local groups, but I'm not anymore. So, I used to say, well, you know, if you keep giving them money, they will stay, and that tended to help a little bit.
Well, yeah, but you know, who gives them a lot of money? A person named Mary Stackpole. And every time she'd stop-
Mary, I hope you're watching.
And she's not watching. Every time she'd go on the highway, she'd give these people money, and she, and I say, you know, you can't do that, you know, because you're just encouraging that lifestyle, you know? You can't do that. So, that, that's my two cents worth, um, and, uh, I would just, save your money, you know? I bet you if you went and bought, if you see, these people are out there now with their children, if you went and bought all those children Happy Meals, you'd probably be disappointing all those, the adults that are there, because they want the money. They don't want their kids to be fed. Yeah, well, I don't know, I don't want to be too hard on these people. I know life is hard enough, uh, but anyways, uh, I'm with it. Save your money, keep it in your pocket, and give it to, uh, an organization that can, that can help homelessness and feed kids and all that kind of stuff.
Thank you.
Ann, if, if we're moving on, um, two, two other-
No, I think you should have said, "Give it to the Backpack Program."
Well, that would work too. And just so you know, Bob, Jeff has been donating, giving money to these folks as well. I'm like, what are you doing? But anyway, um, the Anderson Learning, um, building in, in the, um, manager's update reminded me to request a reimbursement, reimbursement or expenditure, um, to date for that, because we had approved, um, supporting that building in the interim, and I was curious for a financial update on that. I don't think I've seen it in our reports, but, um, and then, kind of along the same lines, there is discussion about the Arts Commission looking at using co-op space in that building, and I'm curious if that's the same Arts Commission that is, uh, within the city. So, I'm just wondering, it seems silly to pay, have a existing city organization pay to rent space in a building we own?
I think there, I think there, it's going to be workspace for artists in the community, so not necessarily office space for the commission.
Not like nonprofit office space.
That's the impression I got.
Okay, okay.
Co-op space where you can use shared place to do your work and your art. I think that's what they're talking about. Am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, that would be more of a work, and-
Business.
It is a work product at the end of it.
Got it, okay, then forget that idea. But anyway, uh, expense, um, report on that building would be great.
Any other comments?
Agenda items?
Agenda, well, yeah, we are on agenda items.
Don't go backwards.
Any other, and text me, email me. Jonathan?
One more agenda item.
What's a scorpion?
I haven't checked yet.
So, since we're on flags, I think for the Fourth of July, we should fly a Gadsden flag.
Fly what?
The Gadsden flag.
I don't know what that is.
That's the, um, the old, uh, "Don't tread on me" flag for the Fourth of July. It was part of the American Revolution, one of the flags used by, um, Commodore, the Zeke Hopkins, uh, First Naval Commander.
That's, that's a good idea.
Oh, throw that out there.
You can bring it forward for the next agenda.
Do it now?
Well, we can't do it now. We don't, we're doing it for the last, for the last time.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Then we can have time to look and see if it's part of the law.
Right, no political movements.
Right, okay.
All right.